Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum, although it might not look like it. We do have five people up here. We're going to have one tuning in remotely. There's Councilmember Payne. Hello. And Councilmember Cooper is excused. Before we dig into approval of the agenda, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our City Manager Jay Burney, who has some new job placement announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, again, for the record, Jay Burney, City Manager. It is with great pleasure that I am here tonight to introduce our new Public Works Director, and he is somebody very familiar to all of us. I conducted a nationwide search and found that we had exactly what we needed right here. It is my pleasure to appoint Mark Russell to the position of Public Works Director. Mark has been with us for nearly 16 years but has 30 years of experience in the public works profession. He brings a wealth of knowledge to his new role. He is known to be a problem solver, a calm voice under pressure, and as several Public Works employees told me, one of the most technically proficient engineers they've ever worked with. So I'm excited to add Mark to our executive team, and with that, I will invite Mark up to make a few comments. Please help me welcome our new Public Works Director, Mark Russell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me say a few words here. And thank you, Jay, for the opportunity to lead the awesome Public Works Department here at the city. I am truly honored to be Olympia's Public Works Director. Public Works provides foundational services for our community by building and maintaining key infrastructure throughout the city, and I'm really excited to have the opportunity to lead this awesome group of professionals that do this work every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge our assistant city managers who have just a little bit of experience in public works. Debbie Sullivan and Rich Hoy are mentors of mine, and with, I wouldn't be ready for this role if it wasn't for their advice and guidance the past 16 years that I've worked with them. So, thank you, Debbie and Rich, for that. And certainly, last but not least, I'd like to thank my wife, Sheri, who's here with me tonight. I wouldn't be where I'm at today. I wouldn't be where I'm at today without your love and support all these years, so thank you, Sheri. And with that, I'll be quiet. So, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mark, and congratulations. And I'm trying not to cry. Okay. All right. Any comments from the day? Councilmember Madron.
Good choice, Jay. Mark, you and I have gotten to meet quite often with our transportation huddles, and I'm just looking forward to continuing that work. And I also noticed the little tagline for you across the screen at the bottom while you were speaking. At first, it said interim Public Works Director, and then they corrected it. It said Public Works Director, so it's official.
I got to congratulate Mark on a call for, prior to Lot's meeting tomorrow night, and I've gotten to know him better since he's assumed that role. And I agree, Jay, good job. This is the right person. Welcome.
All right. And so, Councilmember Payne, just for practical purposes, if you need to speak or say something, I guess you just have to just blurt, because I might not see it. All right. I'll accept blurting.
We'll help you out.
Thank you. All right. With that, we're moving forward to approval of tonight's agenda. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We have an agenda that takes us right to special recognition. We have two items this evening. We're going to start with item 2A, and that is a proclamation recognizing the 50th anniversary of Senior Services of South Sound, a pretty big, major anniversary. And with that, I have our Mayor Pro Tem Gilman, who's going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to invite forward Brian Windrup, who's the Executive Director of Senior Services of South Sound.
Proclamation. Whereas the City of Olympia recognizes seniors as a large and fast-growing segment of our community and honors their role as leaders, parents, grandparents, and elders; and whereas Senior Services for South Sound was founded in Olympia in 1973 by a forward-thinking group of community leaders for the purpose of helping seniors thrive; and whereas Senior Services for South Sound has a mission to improve the quality of life for people as they age and has grown to serve seniors all over Olympia, Thurston County, and Mason County; and whereas Senior Services for South Sound now serves thousands of seniors each year with nutrition, transportation, trips and tours, fitness, recreation, support groups, housing, and daycare for those with disabilities; and whereas the City of Olympia appreciates the strong and growing partnership with Senior Services for South Sound to serve our seniors. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim 2023 as the 50th anniversary of Senior Services for South Sound in the City of Olympia and encourages the entire community to celebrate their contributions to enriching and sustaining the lives of the seniors in our community. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 8th day of August 2023, for the Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Thank you for reading that, and I would like to hand this off to Brian.
Well, I will just say thank you so much. It's an honor to stand here on behalf of all the people that I'm standing here on behalf of. I can't help but think back on the 50-year history and all the people who've come before me, and for that matter, before all of you, who have been a part of this incredible history of service to seniors in the community. I was reflecting before I came here tonight about how in 1973, if you were 80 years old in 1973, you were born in 1893. You know, that's the kind of history that we have. We celebrated the 102nd birthday of one of our seniors in Olympia a couple weeks ago, Madeline. She's a treasure to us. She was born in 1921, and her husband went off to fight in World War II and came home from that, fortunately. So, it's just a touchstone for many of us, of our own families and our parents and grandparents and so forth. And I want to celebrate the partnership that has nurtured this organization into existence here in Olympia. It's something I think the City of Olympia is and should be proud of, and I want to say that a wise person once told me that it's the responsibility of each generation to take the baton and take things to the next level, and I'm doing my best to do that, and this generation of council is certainly helping me with that. I don't want to thank publicly Paul's here today, our partnership with the Parks Department, who we work really closely with. It's a really wonderful thing, so thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you for your partnership and the services that you provide to seniors, not just in Olympia but in the region, so thank you. Councilmember Quinn.
Hey, Brian, congratulations. I just wanted to thank you for always being here to represent the Senior Services of South Sound, and then also for always offering an open invitation for almost every event that you have there. It's really, really a special place for, I mean, you know all of this stuff, but it's really for seniors of all interests and seniors of all income levels, I believe, and to just be in the room at the 50th birthday party was just overwhelming, how much joy was there, and there was so much dancing, and like those seniors could have really bust a move. Like, it was amazing. The 102 senior that just had their 102nd birthday was also up and moving and like put everyone to shame, totally. And it's, I really think that, you know, just through the conversations with everyone that day and ongoing ones whenever I'm at the Senior Center, and others on council do also participate in these events, is that, you know, folks will say like every once in a while that Senior Center or Senior Services and the work your organization does truly not only saves lives, but then also elongates lives, too, to have a place to connect with folks, to find resources, to just be together in community. And then also, kind of a good opportunity to tell you, later on that day, I went home and I talked to my partner and about what I did that day for the 50th birthday, and he said, "Wait a second, so Senior Services of South Sound is not a senior themselves?" So I look forward to the 55th birthday, and when you become a senior. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember Parshley.
I have a different perspective on Senior Services. You have a fund for seniors that allow them to get care for their pets. I can tell you from the side of the veterinarian what impact that is for your seniors. These are, sometimes they're only companions, and being able to get vet care to keep them healthy is priceless, like the commercials say. So, I just wanted to give you a shout-out on that and let you know how many seniors you're impacting through caring for their pets.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 2B, and that is a proclamation recognizing overdose awareness day, and Councilmember Parshley will read the proclamation, and then I'll be inviting forward Katie Strozek, who's the opioid response coordinator with Thurston County.
Whereas no community in Washington State is immune to accidental or intentional overdose, and drug overdose deaths remain high across the state, impacting urban, suburban, rural communities. Overdose deaths disproportionately affect American Indian and Alaskan Native communities and marginalized populations. And whereas overdose deaths are preventable and can be caused by alcohol, over-the-counter medicines, stimulants, opioids, and whereas, like many places across Washington State, we need to continue to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue and invest in best practices that save lives and build communities. And whereas overdose awareness day is an opportunity for all Olympians to stand by those who have lost ones to an overdose and those who have substance use disorder and are diligently working towards recovery. And whereas anyone whose life has been impacted by substance abuse disorder, call the Washington Recovery Helpline at 1-866-789-1511, which offers anonymous confidential 24-hour help for Washington State residents, and anyone can visit the statewide resource wwwstopoverdose.org and obtain naloxone, an opioid overdose reversal medication. And now, therefore, be resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim August 31st, 2023, as overdose awareness day in the City of Olympia, and call upon the community to join in raising awareness of drug overdose morbidity and mortality by reducing the stigma through education, prevention, treatment, and recovery support for substance abuse disorder. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 8th day of August 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
So Katie, if you want to come up, I'll hand you the proclamation.
Good evening, Council. Katie Strozek, I'm the opioid response coordinator at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I just really want to first start by expressing my gratitude for adopting this proclamation again this year. It's been multiple years in a row now that the City of Olympia has proclaimed August 31st as overdose awareness day, and that really just shows dedication to addressing overdose within our community and raising awareness around the opioid and overdose epidemic. Unfortunately, I think that many of us in this room tonight, including myself, have been impacted by the opioid and overdose epidemic, either by friends or loved ones who are actively using substances, who have experienced a non-fatal overdose, or who we have unfortunately lost to a fatal overdose over the last few years. Through the Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force, we have a multi-pronged and multi-sector response to the opioid and overdose epidemic, which is really moving forward the work in our community to try to reduce fatal overdoses for our friends, family, and loved ones, and just our general community members all over. I want to invite everyone to participate in our overdose awareness day event on August 31st. It is from 1:00 to 7:00 at Heritage Park. From 1:00 to 5:00, we'll have a resource fair with over two dozen providers and agencies from our community, sharing different resources that they have, tools, services, all that relate to opioid, overdose, substance use, and other supports. And then from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll be focusing on memorial-based activities so that folks can honor their own recovery and as well as recognize individuals in their life that they've lost to a fatal overdose. This event is really important to us as a community, and it's really close to my own heart, because these are our friends, families, and our loved ones in our community who we've lost, and we just want to really decrease the stigma around drug use and really memorialize those who have unfortunately been lost to this epidemic. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I'll start with Councilwoman Madron.
I just want to thank you for being here again, Katie. You've been doing this work for a few years now, and it's a big crisis in our community, and your service is very valued, along with everybody that you work with. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Mayor Pro Tem Gilman.
Katie, I'll look forward to the overdose awareness day once again, and I've just, this has been on my mind, because I attended a joyous up-and-smoke barbecue for Interfaith Works on Saturday, but as a councilperson, the thing that people wanted to grab me and say was, "Well, what do you do about fentanyl?" And I, and I, so I just, I want to celebrate this public health approach, because I think this is, one side of it is treating it as a public health, as a medical issue, and that means things like safe injection sites, and then the other side is law enforcement and trying to intervene in, you know, the flow of this, this stuff that's killing people. But I think we just have to work from both sides, and I'm just recently heartbroken by losing a couple more folks who I knew pretty well. So, I think it's, it's really important work. Thank you, Katie.
Councilmember Parshley.
I, when I put this forward for proclamation, I'll have to be completely honest. Susan was already on it, Susan Grisham, she was already all on it. I just want to make sure that record is straight, to give credit where credit is due. I personally believe that any addiction is a mental health, health issue, and we should be attacking it in that manner, just as we would for nicotine, for cigarettes. These are addictive substances, and once you're in the claws of the addiction, it's very, very difficult to get out of it, and we should be approaching it like we would the pandemic, and looking at this as life-threatening. And I just, it doesn't leave any sector in our community without harm, and many people associate it only with the homeless community, when that's not true. It is across every aspect of our community, there are people who are addicted. And I agree with everything the Mayor Pro Tem said. We need to make sure that we approach this with all different angles, because that's the best way to tackle it, and then go to the legislature and ask for more money, especially after all the new laws that are out.
I think we ask for more money first. Councilmember Quinn, did you have anything?
No.
I missed it. All right. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I do have a comment.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yes. Hi, Katie. I just wanted to, like Councilmember Madron, thank you so much for your work and coming back to council once again this year, and also for coming to the Law and Justice Council to brief us as well on what we're seeing in our community and throughout the region, and we know that this is one of the top killers in our community right now. And as the Mayor Pro Tem was just speaking about just a few moments ago, is this, is how do we meet this challenge and how do we tackle this huge problem as a local government? And I am certainly grateful that we were a recipient of the opioid resettlement funds, and I'm very much looking forward to the Abatement Council coming together and figure out, figuring out how we're going to utilize those dollars to try to at least start chipping away at this problem and saving some lives. So, thank you again for your work tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, we're moving on to the part of our agenda which we reserve for public comment from our community. We allow two minutes. There's a countdown clock over my right shoulder, and we did not have anybody sign up remotely, so we just have two people in chambers here this evening. We do ask that you don't speak to anything that's been on a public hearing in the last 45 days or in the coming 45 days. If you do, I'll gently remind you. So, I'd like to call forward Janice Murphy-Rising, followed by David Murphy-Rising. You each get two minutes, so you don't have to share.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am a member, I am a homeowner in, near Olympia High School. I live on the corner of North Street and Central, and in the last few years, we have noticed an uptick of speeding, specifically racing on North Street, and not just on North Street, but in a lot of the neighboring areas as well. This is concerning to me, because my husband and I just built a one-level home for my mother so that she can age in place, and she's right next to where we speed. And we've noticed also in the last few weeks, we were busy before doing construction, but it came into our awareness once we started, we recently moved next to her, that Ingersoll Stadium is a hangout spot for a lot of the kids, and not only are, is there speeding going on, but there's lots of things that are happening up until 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, there's lots of noise issues. And so, I emailed all of you on July 20th, pretty late at night, because I was exasperated that I had been calling almost every day since I've lived there about, about the speeding issues and about the noise, and I did receive back an email, which I just forwarded to all of you, that Lieutenant Fraley, I believe, got back to me and said, "Well, once school starts, we can talk to Ingersoll Stadium about getting a fence in, about getting, yeah, a fence in and getting some speed cameras in." And I wanted to share with you that I've got some letters from people that are concerned. That to me doesn't, it feels like a good start, but I wanted just to express that there's a lot of urgency. A lot of us are really terrified, calling at night and wondering and waiting for the police to come up and wondering whether or not we're going to have to get back to sleep or we're going to be able to, you know, sleep well, or if, you know, we're going to lose somebody that, that we know and care about, because this is happening. And so, this is really important to us, and we just wanted to express our urgency, and I'd like to share this with all of you if I can.
Absolutely. Thank you. If you want to hand someone, to our City Manager Jay Burney, you can hand that. And next, I have David Murphy-Rising.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to just essentially reiterate what my wife just said. We heard a couple nights ago, a very loud boom. I don't know if it was a gunshot, it could have been just a firecracker, but it was incredibly loud, loud enough to wake up our neighbor who lives just next door to us, and we saw that he had gone outside, out front to look towards the parking lot where it came from. It's, as, as my wife stated, it's almost a daily or nightly occurrence right now, and I suspect that that will continue. Unknown whether it's actually high school students or youth that are doing it, that's my speculation considering the proximity to the high school, but something I think should be done. I'm not trying to keep these kids from congregating and having fun, but the speeding up and down North Street is a very big concern, considering that it's only a two-lane road, and I've heard them racing up and down, and I've heard them get to third gear with maximum engine RPMs, which in most cars is somewhere between 16 and 80 miles an hour. So, it's definitely a concern that they are putting the safety of others at risk. Maybe some solutions besides, of course, obviously, keeping them from racing up and down, adding speed bumps, putting a gate onto the parking lot, as was mentioned, also potentially inviting them to do these kinds of activities in safer locations would potentially also be a good way to encourage them to do this other places. For example, maybe somewhere down towards the airport, if there's some large open spaces out there where they can drive their cars up and down in a safer location, not where people live, or potentially down by the brewery, potentially in that large parking lot which is open. I'm just throwing out some ideas here, so just wanted to reiterate the urgency, and just some, I'll offer some potential solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I believe we have a response from one of our staff, our new Public Works Director, putting him right to work. Yeah, those, having a safe drag racing area, I don't know.
Hello, Mayor and Council. For the record again, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director. Just wanted to let the council know and our community members that both transportation and public works, as well as the Police Department, are coordinating a response. I think there's been an initial response. As you may have seen, there was a letter from another community member with the same concern, so we are working closely with the Police Department to, to come up with a coordinated response on what we can do, both from a public works point of view as well as an enforcement point of view. And I know after talking with Deputy Chief Shelby, or Shelby, that, or, sorry, Deputy Chief Parker, I'm looking at Mayor Selby at the same time, that enforcement is one of the things they're working on and trying to find the right way to do that, since it is sporadic and wee hours of the morning and things like that. So, I just wanted to assure council and, and the, the community members that we are working on a response.
Can you hang on for a second? I think we have a couple questions. I'm going to go to Councilmember Parshley, followed by Councilmember Quinn.
Have you reached out to the school district to see if we can get some partnership, especially, you know, this is actually a better time for them to do something before the students are back, if they're going to have any kind of construction or anything going on? Just was wondering if you had brought them into that kind of collaborative that you've put together.
Right. I have not personally reached out to the school district, but I believe Lieutenant Fraley has been in contact with them to talk about what we can do at Ingersoll Stadium.
Thank you. Great. And Councilmember Quinn.
Hey, Mark, I really, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate your response. I do wonder, though, for folks that have emailed us and then, as well as folks that are coming to public comment tonight, and then the letters of concern as well that we'll review, what is the timeline for this? I know, you know, I know it's just getting together to coordinate, so you might not have a date in mind yet, but what generally is a timeline? And then also, just means of communication, what's the plan of getting back to folks with updates, that type of thing, from the surrounding neighborhoods and the folks that are here right now?
Typically, we try to respond, you know, within a few days that let them know that we received the concern, and that did occur with, with Susan, as usual. This is a little more complex, because it's an issue that really crosses between the departments, and so I would expect that we would have a response in the next few weeks, for sure, if not sooner. And then, usually in that response, we would do in the similar fashion that it comes in, so if it's an email, we would respond an email, and so on and so forth. And then that would also give a point of contact for the person or whoever is writing us to, to reach out to for further questions. I know when it's just a, a public works issue, we try to generally address the issue, but then offer a communication or even reach out ourselves to, to talk to them, so to get more information. We can certainly do that here between the police and public works.
Thanks, Mark. So, just to clarify, we can, for, hi, I'm talking about you, too, that are in person right now, we have your email addresses when you sign up to public comment, so whenever you do have an update, it sounds like we'll be proactive about reaching back out to them?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. I've got Councilmember Payne also has a question, and then followed by Mayor Pro Tem Gilman.
Yes, I just wanted to thank, you know, our community members for coming to public comment tonight and raising this issue. I know that we've, you know, received quite a few emails on this, and I appreciate the staff being so quick to work on a response, to address it. It is obviously a It is, obviously, a major safety issue. I do recall that this was an issue for the cities of Seattle and Tacoma, I believe. So, I'd be curious if staff would be looking at what it is that they did in response to it and, you know, whether or not it's working for them.
Yes, Councilmember.
Is a question, but doesn't have to be answered now.
We will do that. Councilmember Payne.
Thank you.
All right. And now, I have Mayor Protam Gilman.
Good. So, really, we do policy up here, and the operations stuff happens with those folks. But I can't help but backseat-drive a little bit here. That, David, a couple of things. You talked about the speed bumps. So, we have a whole suite of things we call traffic calming that are possible, but there's also the tension of making sure that school buses move freely through those. So, I think it's something that can be addressed, but that is an approach that's worked to calm traffic in other neighborhoods. Safer locations, you know, there's already South Sound Speedway. And when I was growing up, there would be a "Run What Ya Brung" night, so you could take your own warm stick, if you didn't have a hot rod, and run it on the track for a night. And I don't know if that kind of opportunity exists for young folks who are tuning cars now. But we'll, as we find out, we can figure out where do we redirect folks? And then, the last thing this reminds me of is, I may or may not have been one of the people who cruised Fourth Avenue when the no-cruising ordinance came into effect. And we used a pretty, there was bicycle cops who intervened. And it was, you know, instead of trying to block the ends of the road with big SUVs. So, I just think it was the human pulling right upside on the bicycle and saying, "No, no, 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 not like that." They're just, you know, I know they're kind of pop-up events. They're super disruptive, so they're not on a schedule that's published where we can just plan to have folks there. But I think, continue to shout at us and keep working with these folks from the different departments, and we'll see what we can do.
Now, I'll just add that, I know it doesn't make you feel any better, but you're not alone. I live right off of Capitol Way. It's been horrible. And it really started during COVID, when the streets were so empty. And it's just built up and built up since then, and so I really think it's time for an emphasis patrol. Plus, we need town water police involved, because North Streets, there's a lot of town water involved. So, hopefully, the scale of two departments looking at this, we can get something done. So, thank you for coming forward. All right. That concludes public comment this evening. At this time, I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls tonight? I didn't hear any of today, but sometimes, you know, we get inspired when we look at it again. So, nothing? All right. So, we have a motion and a second for tonight's consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Consent calendar is approved, thanks to all the staff work that goes into making all of those decisions happen. Next, we're on to other business. We have three items today. Our first one is 6A, which is approval of an ordinance approving acceptance of a donation of a gift of art from the Senior Services for South Sound, which we just heard from earlier. So, this would be something at our Olympia Center downtown, a piece of art. And at this time, I want to invite forward Stephanie Johnson, who is, we moved so fast, I didn't move my things around. Which, how are you wearing today, Stephanie?
Arts program. Well, actually, today I'm staff liaison for the Arts Commission.
That's always like, okay.
Right. Stephanie Johnson.
Lots of hats.
Arts Program and Planning Supervisor with Parks, Arts, and Recreation, and staff liaison for the Arts Commission. And here today is Jim Burlingame, Arts Commission Chair. And we're here today to present to you a gift of art proposal from Senior Services for South Sound. They are proposing an Arc of Aging, the Arc of Aging mural, which was located for several years at 510 Columbia Street Southwest. Conceived of, funded by, painted by, and dedicated to representing culturally relevant images of seniors. The original location was located on the exterior wall of a thrift shop run by Senior Services for South Sound. When the property changed hands, the mural was covered with siding necessary for the preservation of the building.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor. Celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, Senior Services, as you know, because of the proclamation, Senior Services for South Sound has proposed a gift of art to the City of Olympia of a recreation of Arc of Aging at the Olympia Center. The location is the hallway where the seniors gather to share a lunch. In sharing the proposal with members of the community who use the space, board members found that of the 55 seniors surveyed, including eight staff members, 98% approved of the design. Staff of the Olympia Center are also supportive of the gift of art proposal. Says Anna Schlecht, board member for Senior Services for South Sound. Many of you know her. And coordinator of the gift of art proposal is also here via Zoom. Is she? If you have questions. And the question before you is to approve on first reading and for a two-second reading the ordinance accepting the Senior Services for South Sound donation of Arc of Aging mural. And I'll just insert my own anecdote, as I do, that this wouldn't just benefit the seniors who go to the lunchroom, because so many other people in the community of all ages use the Olympia Center, including myself years ago, when I took my kids to baby gym, which happens in the rooms just before the lunchroom there. And now, they are 17 and almost 14, and so, we all age. And eventually, hopefully, if we stay here, make use of the services of the senior center.
Thank you, Jim. And yes, I love the analogy of the Arc of Aging. We all are in that arc, includes everybody, right, in that beautiful mural? So, are there any questions about this donation? I'll go with Councilmember Nguyen, followed by Councilmember Partially.
So, just looking through the staff report here, and maybe I've missed it. But how is it going to be put on the wall? Is it going to be with folks that are at the senior center? Is it staff there? Is it literally a recreation of that mural, which, you know, was lively, of course? But I just love to know a little bit more.
I think if we could pull Anna Schlecht in to panel us, that would be great. So, the design will be put together by Chelsea Baker, who originally created the design. And I believe then, it will be filled in by community members and volunteers.
Anna is traveling. She'll be with us soon.
Greetings from Eugene, Oregon. Hi, folks. So, I was in transition. I believe the question was, how is it going to be painted? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's affirmative.
Well, basically, we're going to work with the same original team, world-famous Chelsea Baker Van Druut, who you may know as one of our more cheerful parking enforcement folks, and local architect, Regine Berugas, and myself. I'm not an artist, but I'm a very careful painter and a very enthusiastic mural matchmaker. We're hoping to tap some of the art classes of seniors to enlist them as possible. We're waiting to get approval before we put together our game plan.
All right. I've got Councilmember Partially.
Well, Councilmember Nguyen asked my question, so I'll just simply say, I remember that mural, and I'm so glad it's going to come back. So, thank you.
And Mayor Protam Gilman.
I would move to approve an ordinance authorizing an agreement to accept donation of Arc of Aging mural as a gift of art from Senior Services for South Sound on first reading and forward to second reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So, Anna, you can start planning now.
Actually, I'm going to go back to swimming with my family, but thanks.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Next, we have item 6B, which is approval of an ordinance adopting electric vehicle parking requirements. And I'd like to invite forward Joyce Phillips, who's a principal planner in our Community Planning and Development Department, and Pamela Braff, who is Director of Climate Programs, will be walking us through this. Oh, I'm very happy that she spoke for me. Thank you. So, this evening, Pamela and I are here to bring forward a proposal on EV parking. And I just wanted to share that this was a collaborative approach between climate programs, planning, and building staff. And I'm going to let Pamela go ahead and go first.
Thanks, Joyce. Good evening, council. For the record, my name is Pamela Braff, Director of Climate Programs. I'm going to kick off the first half of this presentation, starting with our Olympia's climate commitments. So, Olympia has made several climate commitments over the past few years. First was joining the work of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and setting goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 85% by, regional emissions 85% by 2050. And then, the City of Olympia has also gone beyond that and said, "We're going to set bolder goals to achieve net zero emissions by 2040." The City of Olympia has also joined the Cities Race to Zero and the Cities Race Resilience Campaigns, working on these climate mitigation and climate adaptation actions at the regional level, sorry, at the international level. So, a big piece of this is supporting the transition to electric vehicles. We know that it's really important to reduce how much we're driving, but it's not possible to do that overnight, and it's a slower, longer transition. And one of the key steps towards getting there is adopting electric vehicles. A big challenge and barrier in that process is, where do you charge? If you want to have an electric vehicle, you need a place to charge it so that you can fuel up and get where you need to go. And so, when we started thinking about EV charging, the first question was, where do people charge? So, when you're thinking about developing an EV parking proposal, we're thinking about, "Okay, well, where do people park the most?" Because wherever people park the most is where they're going to charge the most. And so, this figure kind of shows, it's not to scale, but the foundation of where EV charging occurs right now and where we expect it to occur in the future. So, we know that cars will charge most often where they're parked, and so, that's at home. More than 80% of residential charging is done at home when it's available. So, that's a really big predictor for folks being able to access charging. The second place is at work. We know that workplace charging also plays an important role. It supports drivers who don't have access to dedicated home charging. And it also can extend the daily range for drivers who might have a really long commute, who might not be able to get all the way back and forth on a single charge if they have an electric vehicle with a lower charging capacity. There's been some statistics looking at this at the national scale, and it's found that work, folks with work, access to workplace charging are more than, six times more likely to drive an electric vehicle than folks without it. It plays a really big role in closing those gaps. And then, also at destination, we call this destination charging. This is where you think about that public charging. It's not at home. It's not at work. Maybe it's at the grocery store, or a movie theater, or REI, or wherever I am. It's really best for opportunity charging at your destination. It can be helpful along major highway corridors, and it also plays a really important role in reducing range anxiety. When people start to see chargers going everywhere, they know, "Okay, if I'm running low, I can stop." And that is also really important to helping people make the transition to an electric vehicle. We also know that where we charge informs how fast we need to charge. And generally, you want to use the lowest or the slowest charge that you can use to get you to the destination that you need to go. This has two benefits. One is it's better for your battery, so you're going to extend the life of your vehicle. It's also better for our electric grid. So, as we start to electrify a lot more end uses, things like our vehicles, we really need to be mindful of how much we're taxing the grid and how much power we're demanding at any given time. When you charge slowly overnight or over the workday, you really reduce the amount of charge you're asking from the electric grid all at one time. If everyone got home from work at 5:00 PM and plugged in and tried to do a really super-fast charge all at once, that would be really taxing on our electric grid. It'd be much harder to provide that energy all at the same time, especially when it's powered by renewables. So, we want to think about charging levels. You typically see these described as three different charging levels. So, we have Level 1 charging. That's your lowest level, the slowest level of charging that you could access. You don't need anything special for it. You can plug your car right into a 120-volt outlet, like the outlet you'd use to charge your phone. We all already have them. They're simple and easy, but they're really slow. It takes about, can take like a whole day to charge up your car, if you're using one of those. They're primarily used at home. Sometimes, it's at work. We also have Level 2 charging. This does require some additional charging equipment, and it typically requires a 240-volt outlet, so it's kind of like that type of outlet you would need for a home dryer. This is the most common type of charging that's used at home and at work. It can provide about 10 to 20 miles of range per hour of charging, and it's compatible across most electric vehicles. So, think plugged in for 2 to 4 to 6 hours. And then, there's the DC fast charging. This is also sometimes called Level 3 charging. This is the fastest type of charging. It's most similar to going to a gas station, though not exactly the same. You can provide up to 60 to 80 miles of range per 20 minutes of charging. And so, this is almost never used at home. It's really used for public charging stations, particularly along heavy traffic corridors. It requires specialized charging equipment. It might not be compatible across all electric vehicles. That's the really heavy-duty chargers. When we're talking about EV readiness, though, we're talking specifically about the Level 2 charging. This is the most common type of charging used at home and at work. I've got a couple more definitions for you. There's different degrees of EV readiness. When we talk about EV ready, there's kind of a EV-ready light and all the way able to charge your electric vehicle. And so, we want to make sure that we're defining these. It's going to be important later. So, there's three different types of EV readiness that are defined in the state building code. These are EV-capable parking spaces, EV-ready parking spaces, and EVSE-installed. Or EVSE is just electric vehicle supply equipment. It's typically what people think of as an EV charger. So, an EV-capable space, it doesn't require any wiring. It's just a parking space that's provided with the conduit, electrical panel, and load capacity to support future installation of EV charging infrastructure. So, it's just making it so that later, you don't need to come back and punch through walls, dig up parking space or parking lot, expand your electrical capacity. It's saying, "In the future, we'll be able to accommodate the charging that we need." There's also what's known as an EV-ready space, which just basically takes that EV-capable space and puts wiring through that conduit and adds a junction box or an outlet. It just gets you one step closer towards being able to have that EV charger. And then, the last level is the EVSE-installed or the EV charger-installed. This is then taking that EV-capable space and just adding a charger. So, one way to think about the difference between EV-ready and EVSE, EV-ready is like having the outlet for your dryer, and EVSE-installed is like having the outlet for your dryer, plus your dryer. So, you can already just go ahead and use it. There is a little bit of information available that we were able to find that's looking at, that tells us, gives us a sense of what the cost is for making parking spaces EV-ready and then adding those EV chargers. And so, the costs are a little bit different, depending on if you're talking about single-family or multifamily housing. For single-family housing, the estimated cost to make a space EV-ready at the time of construction is about $150 to $375 per parking space. And then, the cost to add a charger on top of that would be between $380 and $700 for a basic, single-port charger. It's a bit more expensive when you're talking about multifamily. That's just because it's more complicated. You might have to bring the conduit out further to get to the space. It's not right up in a garage, the same way it is with single-family. So, in multifamily development, to make a space EV-ready, which also includes the costs of making it EV-capable, it's about between $1,300 and $1,400 to make that space EV-ready at the time of construction. And then, if you wanted to add the charger on top of that, that would typically be between $1,500 and $3,000 for a single-port charger. And that just kind of depends on how smart the charger is. So, a smart charger that has more kind of on-demand management capacity is going to be a little bit more expensive. They make chargers where you can assign it to a specific unit or a tenant so that they're paying for the electrical associated with that charging. So, those ones are just a little bit. So those ones are just a little bit more expensive. One of the things that's really important to point out here, though, is that the, there's a pretty big difference between if you make a space EV ready at the time of construction than if you try to make it EV ready after the space has already been built. And so we looked at some costs for this and found that to make a space EV ready after construction, it typically costs between $900 and $5,000 more expensive per space. And that's just, you gotta redo a lot of work that was already done. You have to sometimes take down walls, dig up parking lots. You have to expand electrical capacity, things that, that are typically addressed at the time of construction. And that doesn't, that's on top of the current, what the cost would be to do at the time of construction. And that also doesn't include the costs of installing the chargers. That's just to, to go back and retrofit the readiness. And now I'm going to pass it over to Joyce to talk about some of the guiding principles.
Thank you. So as we were developing this proposal, we wanted to keep these guiding principles in mind. For example, we anticipate that EV ownership will continue to grow significantly over the next decade. Washington State has a goal of requiring all automakers to sell an increasing percentage of electric and zero emission vehicles until they reach 100% by 2035. And our state is also working to make that transition even faster with a goal of doing that by 2030 for all new vehicles. So we wanted to keep that in mind. We also believe that most EV charging will occur at home. The transition to electric vehicles will require us to kind of rethink how we fuel or energize our cars. And we do believe that drivers will charge their vehicles where they, where they are parked the most, which is at home typically. And 70 to 80% of the drivers do charge at home. And EV ownership is higher among those who have access to home charging. And that is also important when you think about multifamily because they don't have the capability to pull permits and to install the infrastructure, even if they want to, because they don't own the property. And so sometimes people will try to run an electric cord out to a vehicle, either across a sidewalk or across a parking lot. And that's not very safe either. So we wanted to keep that in mind. And then we also were thinking about how multifamily and workplace charging helps to fill critical gaps in EV charging infrastructure. As we were developing our proposal, we wanted to design it to match as closely as we could with what is intended in the future state EV parking requirements while also pushing us closer to meet the emerging best practices and our climate goals. The building codes treat single-family homes and duplexes the same. One EV ready parking space per unit would be required. And the same would be true for residences with a private garage. For other uses, we have it, for residential uses with three or more units, we're proposing 10% of the spaces would have the chargers installed or that EVSE installed. 25% would be EV ready, and the remaining 65% would be EV capable. This is based off of the amount of parking provided, which I'll talk about on the next slide with an example, given some of our recent parking changes as well. And then for commercial uses, 10% of all parking would be required in each of the categories. So this slide is intended to show how these provisions would be applied if they were adopted as proposed. It also takes into consideration the recently adopted residential parking reductions, which allow greater flexibility in the amount of parking that may be provided in multifamily developments. So I have a few examples listed here to show the amount of parking that would be required in each of those categories based off of an amount of parking that was proposed. And then you can also see how we would handle rounding because sometimes you might be rounding up for EV ready, which would potentially reduce a little bit on the EV capable side. We always take the highest category and round up in that category in this example. We also wanted to be mindful of places where there might be a need to have a little bit of flexibility in these standards. So we've drafted some provisions that would allow for reductions. And this would be to help address issues related to expense of projects, like if it's a smaller project that wasn't, or a new, sorry, a smaller redevelopment project, we wouldn't necessarily want to kick in a bunch of new requirements. So kind of at what level would there be some flexibility there? And then we also wanted to address affordable housing issues as well. So we talked, we have some code language on pages six and seven of the proposed ordinance around some allowed reductions. So for example, when changes would be required on the utility provider side of the point of service. For apartments, when 50% of more or more of the units are for affordable housing. At assembly and educational building occupancy developments, when these requirements would increase the cost by more than 10%. And then also for retrofits that, where there are not going to be substantial improvements or modifications to parking areas. So that's it for the presentation. But Pamela or I would be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Parshley?
I was looking through the stakeholder group information, and I just want to make sure my impressions are correct, that in general, there's a favorable approach. There are some people thinking that it's too ambitious, but in general, it is viewed as favorable. Am I correct?
I believe that, I believe that's accurate. And also, we used some of those comments to help us formulate those opportunities for reductions at the end of the ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here for Tim Gilman.
Can I add one, just one other note on that? There was another kind of larger change that we made based on the stakeholder feedback that we received at the beginning. The earlier proposal that we brought when we had those focus groups focused more on the EV ready versus the EV capable parking. And we heard really strongly that there was a preference for, from, from some of the builders and developers to focus on the EV capable, which reduces some of those upfront costs, but still allows for that future installation. So that was another change that we made.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman?
Thanks. I, I just wanted to highlight, in those compromises, I really appreciated that for single-family houses, we're encouraging a level, an outlet ready for Level 2, but we would allow a wire pulled in a junction box there, ready to install. So that the parts you were describing that are expensive, tearing walls open or tearing a concrete slab up, doesn't have to happen. But anyhow, so those compromises all the way through make a lot of sense. And then a question that somebody asked earlier that I wanted, maybe you could just speak for a moment to how this interacts with the parking, you had it on the slide, but how it interacts with the new parking requirements? Because I, I see you have a when parking is provided. Could you just describe that, please?
So one of the things that we kept in mind, we had originally been trying to keep these parking proposals kind of on the same timeline so that they could be considered together. But we were aware of both of the projects. And so we were crafting them so that they would be able to work together. Also, we wanted to think about opportunities where, for example, in the downtown, where there's a residential parking exemption, but oftentimes parking is provided. We wanted the provision of EV ready parking spaces to be based off of how much parking is provided instead of how much parking is required. And so that is how it is written. So if you want me to go back to that slide, I could. But I, it's just so that you could get a sense of how many of the parking spaces would be in each category based off of the options they have for how much parking is provided. Thanks.
Councilmember Parshley has another question.
And I actually kind of got lost in our own codes. It says, as per the code for 18-something, what defines affordable? Is that, can we just give that to the public? Because they're hearing affordable. But there's so many different definitions of what does that affordable? Is it 80% AMI? Is it below 60? What is that? Or is it all of that?
Oh, boy. I'm not sure if I could even get it right off the top of my head. So the, the definition we have for affordable housing in the, in Title 18 is in 1802-180. I'm not sure I could get it right off the top of my head. Leonard, by chance, do you know that one off the top of your head? I believe it's the same way it's defined in the Growth Management Act with that. I believe we modified it a couple of years ago to match. I'm happy to pull it up.
I got it right here.
Thank you.
Housing affordable to households with an income not greater than 80% of the area, of the median income for Thurston County, as determined by U.S. Department of HUD. Affordable housing should cost no more than 30% of the gross household income, including utilities.
Thank you, Councilmember Leonard. Appreciate that. That was it.
It is confusing, and it gets used in a lot of different ways, that term.
Absolutely, absolutely. This requires a motion, so is...
You ready? All right. I move to approve on first reading and forward to second reading an ordinance adopting electric vehicle parking requirements. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Thanks for all the work that got us to this point. I know that, that went really fast considering how long you guys have been working on this. So, thank you. All right, and item 6B, which is a briefing on our preliminary 2024 through 2029 capital facilities plan. And we're going to keep Joyce with us a little bit longer. And she's going to report out on what the capital facilities plan is. We call it the CFP. It's a subset of our 20-year comprehensive plan.
So again, thank you. I'm Joyce Phillips with the Community Planning and Development Department. And I'm here this evening to speak with you about the preliminary capital facilities plan, which also includes the 2024 through 2029 financial plan. And this capital facilities plan is Volume 2 of the Comprehensive Plan, which I hold near and dear to my heart. And so that's why I'm excited to be here this evening to share it with you. And it's essentially the financial plan for how we're going to work to implement our comprehensive plan. So in our comprehensive plan, we have articulated our shared community values and vision and identified how we're going to plan to meet growth over the next 20 years. And the projects that are included in the capital facilities plan, or CFP, come from the master plans that are developed to help us identify what's needed in order to implement the comprehensive plan. So this includes things like our transportation master plan, the several master plans associated with our utilities and our parks, arts, and recreation plan. So it's really how all of the types of projects across the different departments and divisions of our city come together to build capital projects. It's also important because the first year of the adopted CFP is the capital budget for the following year. I'm primarily going to focus on the 2024 year, but the plan does look out for, for 20 years. And it has a special consideration for the first six years where we look at the financial costs of the projects and how we identify that we'll be able to pay for them. So in 2024, there are several projects by various departments and divisions in the city. The projects total just under $47 million. And the majority of the funds for 2024 are going towards parks, arts, and recreation projects, transportation projects, and wastewater projects, which is also known as sewer projects. We also provide our funding strategy for how we plan to pay for these projects. And that's going to be through a variety of funding sources. Most of these sources are limited by law or city policy and how they can be used. For example, transportation benefit district dollars cannot be used to build parks. Parks money cannot be used to build streets, and, and so on. We are required to provide a balanced budget as well, meaning we can demonstrate the ability to pay for the things that we've identified in the plan. The capital facilities plan is updated annually. The first six years of the plan do have to be financially constrained. So this slide shows the anticipated costs of the projects planned between 2024 and 2029 from the different city departments. And these projects have an estimated cost of 20, I'm sorry, $260.7 million. And that's a lot of money. And we also have a plan for how we're going to pay for that. So this slide shows the funding strategy for how we'll be able to pay for those projects. There are 14 different funding sources that will be used to fund these improvements. Again, most of these funds are dedicated for certain types of projects. And wherever possible, we make use of state and federal grants. So this slide shows the anticipated amount by year for each of the program categories within the plan for years 2024 and 2029. It's an interesting way to look at the data. So it's really the same data from the previous four slides. But you can see in this example which years will have, you know, fluctuations across the anticipated budget needs. For example, you can see in 2026, there's an increase related to the waste resources facility that the city is planning. But I think this is the fun part. Let's look at what the money is actually funding. And we'll start with parks, arts, and recreation. Through a variety of funding sources, as shown on this slide, the 2024 capital budget for the Parks Department is $15.6 million. And the majority of that funding is made up of state grants, impact fees, and funds from the Olympia Metropolitan Parks District. But some of the projects that I wanted to highlight that are planned for 2024 include the Armory Creative Campus Phase 1 improvements, the Yelm Highway Community Park Construction, Grass Lake Nature Park Trail Construction, and Kaiser Woods Park Construction. For transportation, the amount planned for 2024 is just under $10.8 million. And the majority of that funding is coming from federal grants. I think it's always important to note that many of these projects require funding across multiple years in order to pay for them. And they may not physically begin construction in the year that they're shown. It may just be funding to help that project or do a phase of the project, like we saw with the Armory Creative Campus Phase 1 improvements. Many of the projects require funding across multiple years in, in order to be able to pay for them. One example of such a project is Phone's Road, which includes approximately $3.1 million in 2024. But it will cost more than that in order to construct that full project. to construct that full project. Some of the other projects to highlight in two thousand twenty-four include Fourth Avenue and Plum Street Bike and Pedestrian Safety Improvements, the Boulevard Road Trail Crossing, Downtown Bike Corridor, Boulevard Road Sidewalk, Elliott Avenue Sidewalk, a sidewalk repair project, and the annual chip sealing and crack sealing programs. For the sidewalk repair project, one hundred thousand dollars is planned for conducting an inventory of the needed repair work, and then five hundred thousand dollars would be used for the actual repair work itself. For general capital facilities, which essentially covers the capital improvements to city-owned buildings, in two thousand twenty-four, the city is proposing just over two point five million dollars in this category, and that work will help fund a building condition assessment, which we haven't updated in a few years. It will provide new siding for the Hands-on Children's Museum. It will allow for the installation of EV charging infrastructure at the city's maintenance center, and it, a compilation of multiple projects will help address maintenance and accessibility at the Olympia Center. And the project also includes plumbing and restroom upgrades at the Timberland Library. The Fire Department doesn't have any capital projects in two thousand twenty-four, but they, there is a significant amount of capital investment planned over the first six years of the plan. In total, twenty-five and a half million dollars is planned, which includes new and replacement fire apparatus and a new fire station. In two thousand twenty-four, drinking water projects total just under six million dollars. Some of that will be associated with small diameter pipe replacement and aging pipe replacement, Phone's Road Water Main Construction, rehabilitation of the Boulevard Road Reservoir, and Briggs Well Development. For wastewater, also known as sewer, the planned projects come in at just over seven point two million dollars for two thousand twenty-four. This includes some important projects, including the Van Epp's Septic to Sewer Conversion, Old Port One Lift Station upgrades, sewer pipe lining, and then capacity upgrades for Fourth Avenue. Just under one and a half million dollars is planned for the Storm and Surface Water Utility Projects in two thousand twenty-four. They also include a variety of projects. Just some to highlight include the Frederick Street Culvert, Pear Street Conveyance Construction, Braun Avenue Water Quality Retrofit, and some additional downtown flood mitigation sea level rise work. Waste Resources is also one of the programs that has a big project that requires funding across multiple years. Just under two and a half million dollars is planned for two thousand twenty-four, but the project, the project itself will total almost fifty-three million dollars. So I wanted to just make note that there, you know, there's significant future funding anticipated with that project in later years. So I will be emailing each of you a PDF of the capital facilities plan. It was released yesterday and is published on our website. Anyone who would like to review the preliminary capital facilities plan can obtain a copy from the city's website, olympiawa.gov/budget. And then also, I wanted to let you know that the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the capital facilities plan at its meeting in September, and I'll be back before the City Council for a public hearing on the preliminary capital facilities plan in October. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Joyce. Any questions this evening?
Councilmember Madron, followed by Mayor Potem Gilman.
Yeah, I just wanted to note one thing, more something to flag for you all. I think at the end of this month, we're having the, I don't know her title, Executive Director of the Libraries, Timberland Regional Library, Cheryl Haywood, coming in to talk to us and giving us a regular update, and I see that we have upgrades in the works through the CFP. But one thing that I was wondering about is the future of our downtown library and that facility in general. And, you know, we could talk about it more when Cheryl's here with us and as a council later on, but I'm wondering about the future of that building and seeing investments going into it, knowing that the building itself is, you know, maybe towards the end or a little bit past its useful life. I think that's a conversation that we need to have around the future of that facility because we're the ones who are responsible for providing that for the library system. So just wanted to flag that.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Gilman, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Joyce, I just have a few short, nerdy, specific questions. I, I'm not familiar with, there's a, part of the funding is a transfer from SEPA for about three-quarters of a million dollars.
SEPA?
Yeah.
Those are the mitigation impact fees, mitigation fees that are collected under the State Environmental Policy Act, typically associated with projects that occur close to our borders, either in the urban growth area or in the city of Lacey if it's proximate to our border.
Thank you. So that's, that's aggregating together fees that developers have paid.
Correct.
Great, thank you. And the, the other, the other big question I had was, transportation projects have three years that are really big, more than ten million, and then for the balance of this plan, they're about a quarter of that. Is, is that because of funding or because of projects, or that, I was just surprised that it was a line that went...
Great question. The Planning Commission also asked that question last night. I believe a lot of it is associated with the fact that we have some federal grant funding associated with the Phone's Road project, and then that is likely to end once the project is constructed. I am not aware if there's anything else the Public Works Director might want to say about that.
I remember working with Mark at the city of Lacey like twenty years ago.
Good evening again, Council. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director. There's a couple of reasons for that. We have some big projects in the upcoming years like Phone's Road, and the other part of that is a lot of the out-year projects are just being planned and designed, and so we don't have a lot of those projects figured out yet, so we didn't put the money in for that, and that's one reason that we're looking to increase staff so that we can get projects shovel-ready with the upcoming federal grants and the out-years as well. So, so part of it is we have big projects. The other part is we need to do some more work to plan and get projects scoped and get them in the pipeline in the, in the out-years.
Thank, thank you both. That's helpful.
Right. Good things do come from Lacey. Councilmember Partially.
Oh, that's bad. You make me laugh right before I have to ask my questions. I have two questions, if possible. I looked at the parks expenditures drop really dramatically. Is that because we don't have projects planned, or is that, do we, I'm looking at Paul.
I believe a lot of it is associated with the grants and money for the Armory and perhaps the big community park, but...
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you, Councilmember Partially, for the question. Paul Simmons, Parks Arts and Recreation Director. So a couple of things. We have two massive transformational projects on the horizon. One of them is the Armory, the other one is the Yelm Highway Community Park, which will be our first soccer field. And these projects are on a much larger scale than the typical projects that we usually, the, you know, the small upgrades and the infrastructure replacements. We are putting together a presentation that'll likely run through Finance Committee and eventually to the full council that will talk about our approach to that, which is gonna require substantial debt service to be able to fund those two major projects. As we do that debt service, it is going to take away capacity to continue to grow at the pace that we have been growing, which has been pretty fast and rapid. To be honest, that, you know, long-term, the, the pace that we've grown as a Parks Department, we can't sustain continuing to grow at that pace because we have to be able to maintain what we inevitably built. So, so part of the reason those numbers shrink out over time is because we have a one-time debt service that will be coming through, and then we're gonna need to pay on that debt service for several years, which will take away capacity. It doesn't mean we won't be able to do projects, and we won't be able to continue to upgrade things, but it'll be a, a much slower pace than we've been enjoying the last five to seven years since the OMPD passed. But again, we're working on a, a presentation that will get very much into depth what our proposal and recommended approach is as we look at that. But as you are all, well aware, the Armory and Yelm Highway have both received substantial investment and substantial planning and are, are moving in this direction, and, and I think will be really game changers for our department and what we're able to provide to the community, so.
Great answer. Perfect. My, my next one is, I don't want to make an assumption. When you talk about the Fire Department's capital and you're talking about apparatus, are you referring to the trucks?
Yes, primarily the big trucks.
Okay. And maybe this is a question for the City Manager. Would you develop a reserve separate from this in somewhere else for these apparatuses?
Yeah, so as Council knows, we don't currently have a robust or adequate reserve to, for things like apparatus, and so we're also trying to be really transparent in, in what it takes to buy this kind of new equipment, which is why we've moved these types of things to the CFP, because they're larger expenses. So as we develop funding strategies in the future, we will add that in as, so it'll show up as Joyce lists the financing and the, the financial pieces for all the rest of CFP, we'll add that in there as well. So I look forward to continued conversations with the Council and the community about how we get there.
Okay. That, that's my, you answered it, which is where would the reserves be reported out? It'll be in the CFP. Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Madron.
I have another question. When we went through this last time, we got some feedback from the Planning Commission in regards to wanting to see more investments in alternative forms of transportation, and I'm curious, you know, you just presented to them last night, so maybe there's, and, you know, quite a full thing for us to look at until last night. How are they feeling? Are they feeling like we're taking bold enough steps for them to feel assured that we're taking it seriously?
We've talked with them a little bit about some of the changes that are occurring, and they've had a couple of briefings on transportation-related issues this year. What they're, and, and again, they just had their first introduction to this year's CFP last night. So the Planning Commission has formed a finance subcommittee again this year, and they have three meetings, two before the public hearing and then one after the public hearing, and what they plan to do is use the first meeting, which I believe is next Wednesday, to talk about how they're gonna approach their review of such a, a large document in a, you know, a relatively short timeframe. And then their second meeting, they're gonna have chapter contributors from the CFP itself come and talk with them so they can answer questions and, and help fill in the gaps the Planning Commissioners may have in their review. And then also, they have provided some questions to staff in advance, so staff can come prepared to answer those questions. We hope to get a more robust list of questions in time for staff to bring those responses to that second meeting, which I believe is scheduled for September sixth. The meetings were just set today, so we'll be posting those on the city's website. And then the third meeting will occur two days after the public hearing, where they will have an opportunity to identify the topics they want to include in their comment letter, and then the comment letter will be reviewed by the full commission at its public meeting on October second, and the intention is that it will be done in time to share with the City Council at its public hearing in October. And then one of the things, last year, a lot of their comments and questions had to do with transportation, specifically around sidewalks, and so Sophie Stimson has agreed to come and talk to the Planning Commission at their meeting on October twenty-first, or I'm sorry, August twenty-first, to talk about some of the changes that have occurred in this year's CFP, preliminary CFP, to help them understand any changes that have been made in response to the comments they made last year, and also to help answer some of the questions that they have. One of the things that is challenging with the capital facilities plan is to look backwards and see how much money has been allocated to certain projects in the past. You can see forward, you can see what's planned in two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, or, you know, for a particular project, but it's hard to see that information retroactively. So they have some questions around that for some of the projects, but there's more coordination this year, I believe, between staff and the Planning Commission members themselves to try to kind of understand and have their questions answered earlier.
Thank you for that. That was a really, really helpful overview, and it sounds like both staff and our Planning Commission are gonna be extremely busy over the next couple of months.
We're gonna be very busy.
So I'm very grateful for that, and I'm grateful for the, the closer coordination that's gonna happen, because if they have some concerns that are, are coming about, I'd like to find a way that we can address them earlier in the process, so it's not coming to us as like the complete thing ready for a vote, and we, and then we have some feedback that it's, it's, it's sometimes a little too late to be able to be responsive to it. So that's, that, that's the purpose of my question is, you know, how can we, you know, make sure that we're working, as, as a council, we're working alongside you all to address things as they come up, so that we can, you know, get some stuff done this year.
Yeah. And we, we generally also will invite the, either the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee or the Chair of the Commission to come and be available for questions on the night of your public hearing as well, so we'll make sure we do that this year.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mayor Sobe. I just want to add a little more to this conversation as well, because as, as Joyce showed, there's a six hundred thousand dollar placeholder in the CFP for, for sidewalks. And as, as Councilmembers, you allocated some dollars at year-end towards sidewalks. We found some additional dollars within transportation budget to match that, so there's five hundred thousand dollars planned within the CFP to actually do some repair work starting right away in two thousand twenty-four. There's also a hundred thousand dollars set aside to do a citywide sidewalk assessment, so we can get a better sense of scale and of what we're really looking at in terms of what we need for sidewalk repair on a, on a community-wide basis, and we'll get that work done in two thousand twenty-four. And the other one, the conversation that was had, just had at Finance Committee in July is around a, a, a transportation benefit district sales tax, one-tenth of one percent, which is council manic, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to send that conversation to the full council, so we'll be scheduling some time for that. And as part of that, we need to also develop a strategy for how we will spend those additional dollars, and I think the requests that are coming from the community, and I've heard from councils around multimodal modes of transportation, how we're gonna allocate those dollars. So we're gonna be having some more conversations as staff around those two items to bring those forward to the council, and also the Planning Commission will bring them up to speed on those conversations as well. They, we just haven't had them with them yet. So just more to come. There's, I think there's a lot of conversation that's between now and the time we decide and the council decides on the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Right. Thanks for that as well. So I think we're...
Mayor Potem.
I just, I want to follow up on Councilmember Partially's question about the apparatus. Over the last few years, I, I wasn't sure that we had settled on a Station Six and new apparatus. I don't know if this is, if, if that is settled now, or if this is a placeholder for that likelihood, or could you just explain that?
Yeah, when it comes to a new station, I'd call this more of a placeholder for now. There's some other decisions, for example, Southeast Annex Station, that are gonna come before council this year that could dictate some of that. The new apparatus that's there are really truly replacement for what we have existing, so forward-thinking for new equipment that we're gonna need to replace the existing apparatus that we have. And then when it comes to a new station, as part of that conversation, that will lead to a conversation of expanding our apparatus as well, so there's kind of two pieces to that.
And if, if I may, actually, I, I see vehicles being replaced, but also a fire engine pumper for new Station Six already listed in here. So two million for the vehicle and twenty million for the facility, which, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I wasn't sure that we'd settled on that as we were looking at options and discussing the Yelm Highway location and so...
Yeah, I would consider that a placeholder for now, for those conversations to continue.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Joyce.
Thanks.
We'll see, we'll see you again and again. Well, the CFP, right. Well, the CFP comes back several times to us. All right, so that completes our regular business agenda and on to reports. So for the mayor's report this evening, I just want to, you know, commend again our housing, housing homeless, you know, team here at the city, specifically Darian Lightfoot. I was able to take some members from the Yelm City Council and a nonprofit from Yelm that are interested in doing tiny home villages down there, very much wanted to encourage that. So we took them on a tour of the Hope Village, which is over at Westminster Presbyterian, to do, show them a kind of a small scale, smaller scale village, and then took them over to the soon-to-be-open Franz Anderson site, and so you can see kind of the other extreme of where we are. We, we currently have, I think, five or six tiny home villages now, is that we numbered? So we definitely are somebody that other areas are looking to for guidance, and so I'm just really, was very proud of the city and what we've done there. On another tack, we have, since I've been on council before, I've been on council, during public comment, I read some PAT kind of rules for our, how we proceed with public comment here in Olympia. One of the items is referring the, are referring to the forty-five day waiting period for, for public hearings, either before or after a public hearing. This preceded my time. I think it preceded the previous mayor's time. It's been around a long time, and I just always assumed, well, it's the rules, so that's what we're gonna do, and found out that it's not in statute, and so we can modify that with a simple resolution. So I was wondering that since we have not had any issues with people, you know, crowding our chambers with information after we've had a public hearing or before, that maybe we just delete that very simply? And so if I have, excellent, if I have consensus, which it looks like I do, I'm gonna ask that we bring forward, we have staff bring forward a resolution to eliminate that forty-five day waiting period from our public comment requirements. Pretty simple.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just have a question. When you say delete that, do you mean have a discussion around whether we shorten the period of time, or?
I was proposing that we, so that we actually just take that, that wording completely out at this point. It's not been... It's not been an issue in the 10 years I've been on council. And it just adds one more layer of, I think, almost intimidation to a public commenter, because they're like, oh, my gosh, I wonder if I'm, you know, speaking to something I shouldn't. And so, um, if it becomes a, a problem in the future, we could always adjust it again.
Got it, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. So, great, we've got, got direction? Uh, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, even though that rule is in place where somebody can't come to pu- public comment or formally submit comments after a p- a comment period, people have still emailed us, called us. And so those who know how to work the system better can still get heard. So I really favor getting rid of that rule just to kind of level the playing field more.
Absolutely. So I think we've got guidance for staff. Thank you. Uh, that's my report. I'm going to go to my left councilmember, when?
Nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Partially.
Three things to report. Finance was the first, and, uh, Jay Bernie gave some of it away. But I'm going to give a little backstory on that in that, just to remind all of us and the public, if there's anyone listening, the, the sources of funding for our transportation, um, is general fund, impact fees, Transportation Benefit District, REIT, voted utility tax, and grants. And there's a lot of stresses on this revenue stream. And when we were, I've seen this, this slide before, which is in 20 years, how many of the transportation master plans? See, I said it right, uh, Councilmember Madron, not traffic. Um, how many of these different things would we actually be able to achieve at our current, uh, revenue stream? We'd only get 12 of 52 roundabouts done, and this is 20 years. 15 of 81 pathways, only 10 of the 34 planned bike trails, and only eight of 65 planned sidewalks. And in the midst of doing all this, we have to maintain our, um, roads. And as a matter of fact, currently, right now, our roads are around a C. If we get to a C minus, every time we go down, even in the grade scale by a half point, the money to repair the roads goes dramatically up, and it starts sucking up our, um, ability to pay for anything in the transportation realm. So when the different options were brought forward to us, the committee unanimously said we should put forward to the council, then council manic 1% sales tax increase through the T B D to help us offset some of the stresses on our transportation projects, as well as hopefully get some help for the transportation engineering team so they can get more projects, more grants, and they can fund this process more. Um, the rest of the Finance Committee was, um, about the budget process. My other one is the climate. That's a really simple report out. Essentially, the Regional Climate Steering Committee is still meeting monthly for the next month, but once, or until the end of the year. But once we approve as a council, the new I L A that we voted to pull forward to our different jurisdictions will be meeting quarterly. The Thurston County Climate Mitigation Collaborative is the new name. It is a staff-driven process. When we had started this, it was T R P C as a regional, but because every jurisdiction now has staff, it seems better to let them work at their level. The three levels of organization is the Executive Committee, which meets quarterly after this, the Climate Unity Action Work Group, which will be appointed by the staff team because they will know what portions of our community they need perspective from. And then, um, we will have an annual, uh, climate retreat. And pretty much that is what we covered. We will be having the I L A coming forward to our legals in different jurisdictions and hopefully hearing it sometime in the fall. The good news is, we had budgeted $60,000 per year for the, the Climate Work Regional. We will only be spending $47,000, so we save a little money on this process. The last one is Joint Animal Service Commission. Um, I just wrote down some statistics. Um, uh, we got an overview of everything Animal Services does. Most people think of it as licenses, getting in trouble having your animal, uh, ticketed, and the shelter, but they do so much more. And I just picked out a couple of things. They have over 370 volunteers that help run this organization, which equivalent to greater than 3,500 hours in the last six months. Or if it's $20 an hour, $72,000 savings. Or if it's a $30 an hour, it's $100,000 savings for the group. It also, um, in their volunteers, they have over 77 foster homes, which allows for them to increase their capacity, because according to the building, and some of us have been there, they should only have 92 animals. But currently, they have 192. With having these foster homes and these people opening their houses to all these pets, we've dropped that down much closer to 92. And then the last thing we covered was the municipal code review, because our codes between jurisdictions are radically different, which makes it difficult on the police departments and animal services. For example, in Olympia, until recently, you could not charge someone for animal abuse unless they were the owner of the animal. So we changed that in our code, but we'll get more by the end of the year. And then I just have to end with Hugo, the fun story. An adopted pit bull, that the family took him home, and they were adamant to the animal services, there's no way he's going to be on the couch. Two days after being home, they send a picture of him on the couch with dad, both of them asleep.
I know that story. All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Potem Goman.
Well, that's right, you had nothing to report. I was just backwards. Hi. Um, I've got just a, a couple of things. Inner-city transit last week had a pretty exciting presentation about service restoration. And, um, the, the short story is that on September 3rd, we'll be up to 88% of the service that we had pre-pandemic, which includes, um, at, at least 30-minute and, and off, a, a lot of the day, 15-minute service for the Martin Way-Harrison corridor and for Capitol Way, um, going north-south. Um, and we've also extended service to about 10:00 PM on those primary corridors. So that's, that's a relief. It's a hu- a huge relief. And then I just wanted to recognize that several of us participated in National Night Out Against Crime along with O P D and Department of Corrections folks. And it was really robust neighborhood parties and picnics this year. It was kind of a coming-back-awake-from-COVID celebration. And I enjoyed another celebration like that on Wednesday. It was Transit Appreciation Day, and it was the first in-person, big staff gathering in two and a half years for, um, inner-city transit. And that was a delight as well. And hopefully, Mr. City Manager, your permit, you'll ta- your report, you'll talk about a celebration tomorrow mid-morning that will bring us out in public.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, the Land Use and Environment Committee met on July 27th, and we had two items, um, that we talked about. The first is the Climate Risk and Vulnerability Assessment. So we have staff who are working on, um, uh, developing an assessment of the impacts of climate change to our community, uh, and the ways that we're susceptible. And so higher temperatures and extreme heat, wildfire smoke, uh, increased precipitation, sea level rise, all that kind of a plan around sea level rise. But these other things, um, uh, are, uh, things that we're trying to figure out how we're going to respond to. Uh, they have a community, uh, project team that has been working on, um, uh, gathering from the community what the, what the various impacts are, um, through Engage Olympia, in-person events, and stuff like that. Um, and it is going to be coming to council October 24th, uh, as part of a study session. So I won't give too many spoilers. You'll learn, uh, you'll, you'll learn, uh, uh, soon enough. Um, but we did have some good conversation among the committee on additional points of outreach that could be made, or additional impacts that, um, that hadn't, that, that hadn't yet been brought to light, such as what happens if our food systems are disrupted. Um, another thing that we talked about is the Home Energy Score Disclosure. This is part of our climate mitigation plan. Um, and this is actually a regional effort where all, all the jurisdictions are, crossing my fingers, we're all working on this together, which is really exciting. Uh, this is about, um, when a home is, uh, put up for sale, um, and doing a, uh, an energy assessment of that home. And whoever is looking at, uh, purchasing that home or when they purchase it, um, they're able to know what the energy efficiency of that building is and the kind of upgrades that they can make, um, to, uh, to increase efficiency. Um, and so some of the, the key policy areas that we talked about with that is, um, uh, you know, what, what is the trigger event? Is it time of sale? Is it time of listing? Um, the real estate professionals were actually saying that time of listing, uh, works better on, on their end, and I think that works better for everybody. If you're looking to buy a home, um, you know, you can have that information in terms of how energy-efficient the home is up front. Um, you know, we talked about, uh, for what kind of buildings is it suitable, what kind of ex- exclusions might apply, considerations for low-income households. Um, and there's also, we talked about, like, the tools that are available, and Department of Energy has a tool that has, like, Pacific Northwest specific parameters for it. Um, and if this tool is used, um, then federally-backed mortgages, um, you're able to put the energy efficiency upgrades into the mortgage as well. So, um, exciting work. Um, and this is, uh, this is continuing to move, uh, forward. Um, next month, we're also talking about retrofit strategy, which kind of ties into this a little bit. Um, and also, just so you know, uh, in terms of the work plan for the Land Use Committee, we did have a study session on the Capitol Mall Triangle. And at first, we had passed that from Land Use to the full council for that study session because it was on a shorter timeframe, and it looked like it was going to just be two of the same, uh, presentations. But we are actually going to have that come back to Land Use before it comes back to the full council just for a check-in point. It's just not going to be scheduled back-to-back as it was before. Um, and also, an item on the general facilities charges for affordable housing that was on both Land Use and Finance Work Plan. So we are going to let Finance take that one up, and so two of us don't get the same presentation three times. That's my report.
Appreciate that. Uh, thank you. Uh, before I send it over to the city man, oh, Councilmember Payne. Do you have a report?
Thank you. Uh, yes, just one item to report. Uh, a couple weeks ago, I, I met, uh, with the Olympia Historical Society and Bigelow House Museum to discuss, uh, their proposal, uh, that they had with us, um, to find a way to work with them, um, you know, to bring about, um, a, a history museum in our community. Um, and while I did, um, you know, leave that meal, that meeting feeling really, really positive about the possibilities, um, the economic opportunity that could come, uh, you know, from such a proposal, but also really looking at how could the city be a real partner with them in bringing this to fruition? Um, and while I know we have a lot of competing priorities, uh, next year, and I did not make any commitments, uh, to them in that meeting, um, I will say that I think it's very important that we keep the conversation alive. Uh, and so here I am mentioning it to you tonight, um, their proposal. Uh, if you, uh, haven't met with them already, uh, they will likely be reaching out to you soon to discuss it with you. And that's all I have. Thanks.